...we know as love. Within the Christian community, love is in the DNA of any Christian person. Love is woven within the fabric of who we are as a Christian community. And this is why we believe Jesus, because he's the one that showed us how to love. And so if you are not a Christian, and I'm here to say that we as Christians, we are not knowing for our theology, we are not knowing for what we believe in terms of Bible and so forth, but as a Christian community, right in the core of our belief is the four-letter word, love, L-O-V-E. I want to share with you a short story of my personal journey of how I came to encounter love. Back in 2009, that's just over 10 years ago, and on the 6th of May, I was a bit intoxicated. I was having fun with a couple of mates, and then all of a sudden I heard a scream, and it was coming from upstairs. And me and my mates were hanging out downstairs of the house, and I heard a scream, and the scream goes, "Help, help!" And so I rushed upstairs to find my wife, and she was crying, she was bleeding at this point. And I looked at my wife, what is happening, so concerned, and she was telling me, "My water is broke." And sorry for the details. But at this point, I've never encountered something like this, I've never known these things. And so I said to my wife, "Wow, why did you break it for?" And my wife looked at me as if, you know what, if you don't do something, you are out of the house. And so I said to my wife, "Ring your mum!" And my wife looked at me again, "The next one, you're going to be really out of the house." And so I said, "What do you want me to do?" She said, "Take me to the hospital right away." So we rushed to the hospital, mind you, I'm intoxicated at this point. And then we were driving, and I was like, "Oh my goodness, is there any police out there that can catch me? Now is the time." You know, now is the time, because I now have a perfect excuse to say to the police, "Why I'm speeding? I'm taking my wife to the hospital." And we got to the hospital. I've seen the nurse worked on my wife, did everything they did, and I was so impressed, I was so shocked, until I heard a cry that I never forget, that it still sounds true to my ear today. It was a baby cry. And I looked at that newborn baby, and I felt something that I've never felt before since my wedding day. That was love. I've never seen something so beautiful, and I've never felt as if my heart and my baby's heart is beating as one. Something happened in that room, delivery room that day, that changed me from being intoxicated, all of a sudden being sober. I've never felt love before this way. I am falling in love all over again for the... You know, I'm talking about this now, and it's just taken me back all the way in 2009 on the 6th of May, when I first became a father. Leaving the hospital that day, I went back home thinking and dreaming, "I want to go back there. The first thing I want to see when I wake up in the morning is to hold my baby daughter." And I started dreaming, I started to dream crazy things. I wanted to see my baby daughter blow her first candle for her first birthday. I started dreaming about my wife celebrating, you know, graduating from school. I started dreaming about my daughter, about walking down the aisle, her being, you know, getting married. All of these things rushed through my head, because now I felt love again. I'm in love all over again. And if there's anything that can change Mount Isa, it's those four-letter words, love. If there's anything that can change who we are, it's that four-letter word, love. Love can change anything. Love can change a hard community as Mount Isa. Love can change the world. Love can change an intoxicated person like myself to become sober again. Love can change any multitude of things that we're struggling with within our community, and it becomes so easy if we all have love within our hearts. So what do we need here in Mount Isa? From a Christian community perspective, we need love. We need lots of love. Mrs. Slade and councillors, members of council here, that is my prayer today, that we become instruments of love, that we become indicators of love. Let's make Mount Isa known as a community full of compassion, full of care, and full of love. I want to leave a practical challenge for you. How can you show love in your role? How can you show love today? While we have the opportunity to share and to show love, I urge and I pray that may that be a priority for us. How can we show love today? Let's pray. Our dear only Father, I pray that you use us as instruments of love today. Help us to show and to share love. Help us to find new ways to serve our community with love. And help us to build this community with compassion, caring, and love. In the name of Jesus we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Pat. That was a fantastic prayer, and I can tell you from experience, people talk a lot about childbirth, but one of the things they forget to say or warn people about is the fact that you are going to fall in love at first sight, and it's going to be the most passionate love affair that you'll ever have in your life with this beautiful child. And sometimes we forget to say all that about childbirth, but it is something that it's amazing, and yeah, thanks for sharing. All right, so with item four, it's... So we are now going to item three, which is public forum, and the business of the agenda is suspended by the chair to give the public in attendance the opportunity to address the council. Are we going to questions first? Yeah, okay. I believe we have two people.
I'd like to thank the council for allowing me to address the council today, mainly on safety issues. First of all, outside dollars and cents, Cook Park dropped down that much. Hello. I'm not wanting to play good in the background. But then I was telling the council, I've got a mole behind the car, because I didn't think of that. So I'm going past and realise there's a lot of space between the street and the car. So I was just wondering if the council could consider putting two-way lines, road line,
So through you, Madam Mayor.
Yep, sure.
I think one of the directors is going to answer.
Sure, I'll put you through to Bernard Smith.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Yes, we are aware of the problem. There are two or three actions either being taken or about to be undertaken. We have acknowledged the issue of forcing people to walk around the back of the cars. We've put a couple of openings in the rail which was put up, and we're about to put another opening in. It is unusual circumstances leading to the very high steps, and we acknowledge it is dangerous. The next step is to put some wheel stops, so to stop the cars parking close to the barrier, and then ultimately we want to put a grate across the curb, which will make it more convenient. So we've put some interim measures in place.
Yes. Sorry, through you, Madam Mayor.
Can I say something else?
Yeah, you can, but can you make sure the microphone's closed to your mouth so the people who are watching the stream can hear what you're saying?
Yeah, thank you.
I was going through Cook Park and Corral Street section for two weeks, and I know there's a give-way sign had been lying on the ground, and so I thought this is no good. So I went to the council, put a form in, and the next day the signs were erected. But if anyone sits on that corner, and you drive around behind the steering wheel, and they just go straight through those intersections without slowing down or anything. So I was just wondering if the council could also consider putting some zigzag white lines on the give-way, on the corral street, both sides of the intersection, and... Roads are very dangerous.
We can definitely have a look at that.
And the bit... I just noticed going past Grace Street along the Buffalo Club and turning into Camel Wheel Street, which is at the back of the club, the bitumen's all been ripped up, and it's through these enormous, monstrous trucks with four trailers, twenty tons, a hundred tons, turning around, the wheels are skidding, and it gets ripped under the bitumen. Whether that's government road, main road, or whether that's council responsibility, it's costing the council a lot. So I feel council should... Mission's done to get all this ore back on the rail instead of everything going by road. If you look at the trains going out to the busway, there's eighty carriages, which would represent sixty seven trailers that we're getting now doing the... Coming from. So I'd like the council to look at that, about count, about traffic turning, because they pull the road, the wheels, and sometimes it gets worse because the bitumen's a little bit softer, and it's going to be allowed to turn. Four trailers on.
I think three.
And one other thing, I'd like to congratulate the council for applying for the grant for the water road, which is very well supported, fantastic for health. And I see they also got a fitness centre in Cloud Street starting this Saturday too, which is excellent. So congratulations for the council for applying for that government grant.
Thank you, Peter. And I think Renee Wallace has got an answer for you for the previous question.
Through you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for raising your hand. They're talking to many roads. They actually have a schedule at the moment, they're going to be working on the Great Street Bridge in about May, and they're looking at taking the asphalting further up to Camel Wheel and some streets. So they do have that planned at the moment. I haven't looked at that specifically, but yes, I'm aware that they are doing those works in the...
Thank you, Peter.
Afternoon, Madam Mayor and the councillors. I'm Troy, representing the Mount Isa Heat Swimming Team. We've just got a couple of questions about the pool. Mount Isa Heat Swimming Club would like to request the use of the swimming pool on weekend to conduct a couple of swimming carnivals for the region. We'd ideally like to look at two, one in term four of this year, one in term one of next year. We have put in a request to hire the pool on a weekend, but it has been squashed for public interest. We're just wondering if the council could look at that. It will benefit our swimmers and also the regional swimmers of the area, considering we're the only 50-metre pool in this region.
Thanks, Troy. Bernard, did you want to answer that one?
Sorry, it was about hiring the pool as distinct of the cost of hiring it?
This one's mainly just to be able to hire it for a weekend, like for a half-day Saturday or full-day Saturday.
Okay, look, I'll just have to defer back the pool manager for that, but we can get back to you in the next hour or so.
And second question is, Mount Isa Heat Swimming Club again, would like to request the use of the swimming pool to conduct training for the club members. We currently do this twice a week. This costs us $25 per lane per hour. I was wondering if the council could help out with this in reducing or even giving us these facilities for the training for our kids.
We, Madam Mayor, we have a community grants programme, and within those community grants there is provision for assistance in kind, so we can discuss with you making an application through that programme for that assistance.
No, thank you.
Thanks.
I have one question about the swimming pool, please. I went to...
Thank you, Troy.
Attent to ten on last Monday, which is a public cold day, and there were no times outside display, so I thought, oh, well, it must be closed all day for the public cold day. But if you look up the Mount Isa Facebook, you find it opens at 10:30 on it. But they should have a chalkboard that they can write those notices down, same for this coming Monday. You know, people don't realise that if they go there early, it's closed, but at 10:30 it will open. So it'd be nice to have some times which are easily changed each day or whatever. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter, and again, thank you, Troy. We, you know, when I grew up, we had two swim clubs in Mount Isa, believe it or not, and my brother still holds records at the town pool that have never been broken, so very important sport in Mount Isa. So thank you again for coming all the way to our meeting to ask those questions.
Through the chair, Madam Mayor, it would be a good idea to see swimming carnivals back in Mount Isa, because it is the only chance. A lot of the regional kids get to come in and actually use the 50-metre pool, very successful in the old days, so it brings a lot of money into Mount Isa. All the visitors comes in, it promotes the sport of swimming. Sometimes I know we did have to close the pool, but I think the benefits of it far outweigh, and I think public understand too, when you've got swimming clubs all coming together, it's only for one day, so I think it would be something that, as a council, I would like to see go forward.
Couldn't agree more, and we definitely had kids qualified for nationals back in the day, so not just state but nationals. So, you know, Mount Isa was a very big, big swim... We had two swim squads, like I said, and that was one at the Catholic School and one at the town pool, which is now Splashes. So, yeah, good to see you here. Okay, so that now takes us to item four, which is conflict of interest. Councillors are invited to declare any interest in relation to the agenda, including any late items presented. Councillor interests are noted against relevant items in the minutes clerk for action during the meeting.
No conflicts.
No conflicts.
Through the chair, I have a conflict, Madam Mayor. It's a declarable conflict against the correspondence from Western Queensland PHN, where they're offering to provide funding for mental health services to the council. The board I chair, North and West Remote Health, they actually do receive funding for similar services, primary healthcare services from Western Queensland PHN, so I'd like to leave the room when we're discussing that correspondence. Thanks.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Okay, if we have no other, that will take us now into item five, which is deputations and 5.1. And I would like to welcome the representatives from the Women's International League for Peace and Freedom and ICAM, who last night held a community event showcasing the prestigious Nobel Prize won in 2017. In February this year, our council proudly agreed to officially endorse the international campaign to abolish nuclear weapons cities' appeal. We were the first local Queensland government to do so. Our city is deeply concerned about the grave threat that nuclear weapons pose to communities throughout the world. We firmly believe that our residents have the right to live in a world free from this threat. Any use of nuclear weapons, whether deliberate or accidental, would have catastrophic, far-reaching and long-lasting consequences for people and the environment. I would like... These women travel, made a promise to Mount Isa that if we put this motion forward, that they would come all the way back to Mount Isa to show us the Nobel Prize medal, which they certainly made good on that promise last night, so thank you so much. And I would like to invite them up in front of the stage.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor, esteemed councillors, friends. I'd like to press our sincere appreciation for Mount Isa signing the city's appeal, which is designed to strengthen the case for Australia to sign the ban on nuclear weapons. And we are absolutely delighted that it was a regional, a council in regional Queensland which agreed to do this. You guys have paved the way, and you now join the ranks of 34 other councils around Australia and hundreds of other councils around the world, including London, Los Angeles, Washington, Paris, Tokyo, et cetera. So we are very, very grateful, and I guess we'd also like to say, you know, we hope that nuclear war or an accidental nuclear strike will never happen, but these things can happen, and the dangers are actually much higher than most people realise. The dangers are, in fact, something that we have to address. Nobody... Well, people did predict that we might have a horrific pandemic striking the world, but most of us didn't really think that would happen in our lifetimes. We know that these things can and do happen, and it is therefore really important that we take the necessary steps to prevent such a thing from happening. So this is a global movement, and we're delighted that Mount Isa is leading the way in this global movement. And as a testament of our appreciation, we would like to give this certificate to our ma... to your mayor, and also an ICAM flag.
I would just like to say how proud I am of the Mount Isa City Council for being the first council in Queensland to endorse this, so congratulations each and every one of you.
I have the medal with me. Wherever I go, the medal goes. He was couriered up to me, we call him Alfie for short, after Alfred Nobel, and it's been in my possession for the past couple of weeks in order to bring it up here. Be very happy if any of you would like to see it at close range or have photographs taken. If you are going to have the medal itself, would you please use this glove? But otherwise, you're very welcome to have a closer look. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and the... I'm sure there's a few people who'd like to take you up on that offer.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I too welcome the ladies from ICAM for coming up to Mount Isa. I think Mount Isa has been, you know, at times been number one in things that they do, and I think this is just another example of that. We're not frightened to put our hand up or our heads up, whichever way you look at it, but look, we're happy to join all those other cities around the world, because, yeah, clearly it's a really, really ominous threat, you know, that we hope will never be realised.
And that now takes us to our next item, which is Casual for a Course Initiative. So Paul's Hoofs and Claws is a local non-for-profit organisation in Mount Isa that is run by a dedicated group of animal lovers. Paul's Hooves and Claws provide foster refuge to abandoned, abused, surrendered, and orphaned animals. Their mission is to unite lost or... Their mission is to unite lost or found animals with their owners or find suitable permanent homes. Paul's Horse and Claws also rescue animals from a local pound where possible, educate the community on suitable care of animals and address animal cruelty issues. As part of March Casual for a Cause, which is a council initiative, our staff were able to donate four hundred and twenty-three dollars and eighty-five cents, and also gather a number of items for the Paul's, sorry, Paul's Horse and Claws wishlist. So, I'm very proud of the staff at Mount Isa City Council, as this is their initiative, and it's such a fantastic, it's such a nice part of the council meeting to, to do this. So, thank you, and if you could come up?
Just sign the certificate, yeah, that's good.
For the last two months, we've been having a lot of people wanting to rehome their animals. It's been sometimes a problem, but finding foster carers is quite hard, but we have succeeded, succeeded so far, so good. Cats is really a big number to find, to find foster carers, which is so many, yes, with them as well. So, anything we can grab from anyone is much appreciated, and it goes a bit forward. Last month, it was five thousand dollars. It's a bit expensive. Last year, little fun, it's not little, it's big as well, and we're much appreciated. It's on the treasure, I love it.
Look, animals don't have a voice, so it's fantastic you have an organisation that can be of voice for them and to, to help them, so thank you so much.
Stay there, Phil. Can you hold it above your head?
So, that takes us now to item six, which is the previous council meeting minutes, and the officer's recommendation and the motion is that the minutes of the ordinary meeting held on the seventeenth of March twenty twenty-one is received and be confirmed. Can I get someone to move that motion, please?
Move, councillor Barwick.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, can I get someone to second that motion?
Second.
Thank you, councillor Tully, all those in favour? And that's carried. And that takes us then to item six point two, for the fourteenth of April twenty twenty-one special meeting minutes, and the officer's recommendation and the motion is that the minutes of the special meeting held on the fourteenth of April twenty twenty-one is received and be confirmed. Would someone like to move that motion?
Move, Fortune.
Thank you, councillor Fortune, would someone like to second that motion?
Second.
Thank you, councillor Tully, all those in favour? And that's carried. And that takes us then to item six point two, for the fourteenth of April twenty twenty-one special meeting minutes, and the officer's recommendation and the motion is that the minutes of the special meeting held on the fourteenth of April twenty twenty-one is received and be confirmed. Would someone like to move that motion?
Move, Fortune.
Thank you, councillor Fortune, would someone like to second that motion?
Second.
Thank you, councillor Tully, all those in favour?
Sorry, Madam Minister, through the Chair, even though I was on Skype, can I still?
Through you, Madam Mayor, yes, she can.
You, you're, through you, Madam Mayor, you're an active participant in the meeting.
And that takes us on to items number seven, development and land use, and I'll hand you over to councillor George Fortune.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, seven point one is the development and land use quarterly report, and I'll move the officer's recommendation that council receives and accepts the quarter three, January to March twenty twenty-one development and land use quarterly report.
Thank you, councillor Fortune, can I get a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you, councillor Streton, are there any comments for or against this motion?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, there's a few highlights I just wanted to take out of the quarterly report. The development applications, there were six received over the quarter and four approved, and the year-to-date totals are fourteen applications received and nine approved. With the building applications, there's ten notice of engagements, fifteen building approvals were issued by private building certifiers in the quarter. Of the fifteen building applications, there are a total of twenty-one structures for which permits were issued. Total value of the building works for the Mount Isa City Council local government area for the quarter was two point four five million dollars. Another excerpt is the property searches, there were a total of a hundred and thirty-four property searches, and of these, a hundred and fifteen were for residential properties, sixteen were for commercial properties, and three were requests for certification of classification occupation. That's the quarterly report.
Thank you, councillor Fortune. Any other comments?
Just a comment, Madam Mayor, thank you. Look, I noticed the, the property searches are well up on, on last year, nearly more than double, and also that there's an increase from the last quarter as well, so that's all going pretty well, I think, for the, for the city and just the vibrancy at the moment, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. All those in favour? And that's carried. Seven point two, materials change of use for motor vehicle repair workshop, councillor Fortune?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, seven point two, item seven point two is the material change of use for a motor vehicle repair workshop, forty to forty-two Marion Street, described as lots eighty-seven to eighty-eight on plan, MPH one three double nine three. And I will move the officer's recommendation that council approve the application for a material change of use for a motor vehicle repair workshop at forty to forty-two Marion Street, Mount Isa, described as lots eighty-seven and eighty-eight on plan, MPH one three double nine three, subject to the following conditions, one to forty-four.
Thank you, councillor Fortune, can I get someone to second that motion? Thank you, councillor McCrae, are there any comments for or against this motion?
Just a comment from the notification period, the public notification period, there were two submissions relating to noise and water discharge, they were taken into account in their conditions and covered under condition seven for the fencing and the noise reduction, and also condition forty for the stormwater drainage, so those were taken into consideration and dealt with.
Thank you, councillor Fortune. There's no other comments, all those in favour? And that's carried. That takes us now to item eight, which is works in construction, and I'll hand you over to councillor Mick Tully.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The item eight point one, the infrastructure services monthly report, the officer's recommendation that councils receive and accepts the March twenty twenty-one infrastructure services monthly report.
Thank you, councillor Tully, can I get a second for that motion?
Second, Streton.
Thank you, councillor Streton, any comments for or against this motion?
Thank you, sorry, thank you, Madam Mayor, I've just got a, a couple of, well, two questions, actually, if I could just ask Renee, sorry. The Thompson Road, how, how is that going, I've driven past about a week ago, and I was just wondering whether, how far we are and whether it's been completed or not.
Through you, Madam Mayor, councillor Tully. With Thompson Road, work has commenced there, we're looking at its completion within about five weeks, sorry, the community are being notified each time they're getting close to their driveways, so they're giving them four days' notice to make sure that they're aware that it's occurring. If it doesn't meet with them, then we can move to a different section and come back, but they're in constant communication with the community that is affected by those upgrades.
Okay, thank you, Renee.
Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, through the Chair, just a question, a clarification, there, on page one hundred and ten, which is under item five, I think, yeah, there's a, in the third paragraph, there's a new signage system on motorbikes access which has been erected around the area of the city, is there any clarification on that?
I will have to act you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. If there's no further?
Yeah, one more. The, I noticed the Mundara Bike Way has been mentioned in the infrastructure report, but I just wonder, is there any plans to do the, a top coat to that bike way at the moment? Because it's, well, it's needed for it to be, you know, in top shape for people to use it, yeah.
Sorry, I didn't have to do it.
Yeah, so the bike way from out to the lake, from the, I think it's a grid on Mundara Drive, it needs a soft seal top coat on it, yeah, for people to use it, yeah.
That works currently, not so good.
Oh, okay, thanks.
Well, I'll make notes.
Thank you.
Thank you, any more comments?
Yes, sorry, Madam Mayor, just if I can ask Renee another question regarding the Gleepley Park pump track, how is that progressing, please?
Through you, Madam Mayor, thank you, councillor Tully. For the Gleepley Park pump track, we've recently received tenders, and we anticipate for the evaluation to occur this week. So, that's for a design and construct contract.
Yep, so is that still September, do you think, or no, the completion?
I think currently.
Thank you, Renee. All right, if there's no more questions, all those, oh, there is, Deputy Mayor?
One more, yeah, I was just trying to find it, page one hundred and fifteen, I think that's the, yeah, the smart water meters, I believe that's pretty close, it's being evaluated at the moment. Will, will councillors receive some information around what those smart meters will actually do for residents and also for council, and possibly some, some information on the water meters that we'll be using?
Yes, through you, Madam Mayor, yes, Deputy Mayor, we will, we're finalising the tender evaluation now, and we will be providing an update to council on the particular selections moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Renee. Okay, if there's no more questions, all those in favour? And that's carried. And that takes us to eight point two, which is the civic centre remedial works update, and that's councillor Tully.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item eight point two, the civic centre remedial works update, the civic centre, the officer's recommendation is that council receive and note the civic centre remedial works update.
Thank you, councillor Tully, can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded, Fortune.
Thank you, councillor Fortune, is there any comments on this for or against?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I, I think the sooner we get this up and running, the better, I think, the, we have waited, you know, well over twelve months now, I mean, even though we have had, you know, a lot of things that we found out once it was stripped, but, you know, the sooner we get it back and, you know, the, the public can use the better. We had two, two blui functions overista, which from all reports were very successful, so thank you.
Thank you, councillor Tully. Who have the comments, all those in favour? And that's carried, and that takes us to our next one, which is eight point three, for councillor Tully.
Thank you. Item eight point three is the adoption of the asset management gap analysis report for twenty twenty-one, and we, with the officer's recommendation that council accepts the improvement actions identified in the asset management gap analysis report with timelines subject, subject to change as resources come available.
Thank you, councillor Tully, can I get a second for that motion, please?
Second, Barwick.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, can I, any comments for or against this one, councillor Tully?
No, I, sorry, thank you, Madam Mayor, I just think it's well overdue that we have something like this, and so for council to deliver sustainable services to the community of, you know, through a seven hundred and thirty-five million dollar asset portfolio, which includes water, sewage, roads, et cetera, so, you know, I think it's something that we've certainly lacked, you know, in my time here, is, you know, on the council, and was something that I've always, you know, trying to push, because it's, it's certainly, you know, a lot easier to manage your assets when you have, when you know where they are and the age, you know, for your appreciation as well as your budgeting, so, yeah, I'm all for it.
Thank you, councillor Tully, any other comments on?
Thanks, Madam Mayor, yeah, I concur with councillor Tully, I think council has been focused on moving towards getting a lot of work done on, on assets, you know, over some time, quite some time now, and this cult consultancy that we've had here and, and the report that's, that's going through today is, is a really, is a really good step in that right direction, you know, and, and, you know, it's just, it's pertinent, I think, to point out that the dichotomy we face as councillors is, is about providing assets that make the city more livable and how much money we spend on that, but also to maintain our existing assets to a premium level, you know, which probably hasn't always been done for many, many years, but, you know, I know that each, each term council will spend a fair bit of money on upgrading the existing assets, but, but also they need to, you know, improve the livability of the city as well, so it is a challenge, and I think there's a lot of skill in that for the executive and councillors to try and, try and get that to a good, good balance, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. There isn't any other comments, all those in favour? And that's carried. And this now takes us to item nine, which is the beautification parks, gardens and youth with councillor Kim Coghlan.
I'd just like to read out the officer's recommendation that council receives and accepts the March twenty twenty-one parks and gardens monthly report.
Thank you, councillor Coghlan, can I get a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you, councillor Tully, any comments for or against that motion, councillor Coghlan?
Yeah, all the crews are working very hard around the town at the moment, the thing that seems to be at the family fun park, graffiti vandalism seems to be a daily, daily happening at the moment. I don't know whether we can talk with police and ask for extra, extra police drive, drive buys or whatever, I know we do have security that goes there, but it's at all hours of the night, the fences are getting kicked in every day now, they got graffiti the other day, I know a pool's been broken into as well. We'd just like to say to anyone in the public that is watching to please report it on Police Link or the, our normal police station up here, the more statistics we get here to show that we have got a huge problem, the more chance we've got of getting more people here. I do, I would like to pass on my thanks too to Glencor, who I've been working with, they're doing a fantastic job cleaning up their greenbelt as well as other properties that they have around the town that have been a bit overgrown and that, and they've come to the party quite quickly. I just would like to ask through the Chair to the CEO, the barbecues at the Tom O'Hara Park, I don't think they've been put in yet, and I'm just a bit worried with the tourist season coming up, that these are highly, used quite a lot, if we could get on to that. I don't think they've been put in yet. And I'm just a bit worried with the tourist season coming up, that these are highly, used quite a lot, if we could get on to that, the two wood barbecues. Yep, just that. And also the, the public toilets in Miles Street, I think we have to address a problem with the men's toilet. It's quite unacceptable, the smell that comes from it. They are clean, but there's a, it's disgusting actually. So we do need to do something as a council on that one. If we could have some workers look at that and try and rectify the problem as soon as possible.
Through you, Madam Mayor. I noticed the Director's written down those ones from Infrastructure Services, so they'll get followed up.
Okay, thank you for that, and I think that's about it.
Thank you, councillor Coghlan. Anyone else who have any comments? Ah, yeah, Renee?
Through you, Madam Mayor. Councillor Coghlan.
Thank you. Thank you, Renee. Okay, if, all those in favour, and that's carried. And that takes us now to item 10, which is Tourism, Events, Sport and Recreation and Library, and that's councillor Peter McRae.
I'd like to move that council receives and accepts the March 2021 Library Monthly Report.
Thank you, councillor McRae. Can I get a second for that motion?
Streton.
Thank you, councillor Streton. Councillor McRae, have you any items for?
Um, no, the main crux of that report was just their decreasing the social distancing to two square metre, two, one person per two square metres, and just a bit of a wrap-up of Harmony Day, but I think we've already discussed that here.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, all those in favour, and that's carried. And that takes us to item 10.2, which is.
I'd like to move that council receives and accepts the March 2021 Tourism and Events Monthly Report.
Thank you, councillor McRae. Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded, Fortune.
Thank you, councillor Fortune. Councillor McRae, any comments on this one?
Um, no, I'd just like to make mention that we've had a couple of years, a couple of meetings with the Hundred Years Committee, that's progressing nicely. And between the committee and the community consultation, we've come up with some very exciting projects and ideas, which will be good to roll out for the community. I'd also like to congratulate the organisers of the Anzac Day Parade on Sunday. Both of the ceremonies were very well attended and went down very well. And also, I'd just like to mention welcoming Babies Day coming up on Sunday, the 23rd of May.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor McRae. Is there any other comments?
I would just like to ask, I hadn't noticed before, but the Babies welcoming day has been moved to a Sunday. I'm not sure the reasoning behind this. Usually in prior years, it's been during the week.
Through you, Madam Mayor. I'm not an expert in welcoming Babies Day, but I'm happy to go back and try and find out why the changes occurred, because I don't know. I'm just looking at Lindsay, whether she knows. To encourage more people to attend and for businesses to have stalls. And I think we're at record numbers on the Welcome to Baby Day. It's a lot of babies.
That is a lot of babies. I was just concerned because usually there's more babies to kiss and welcome than there are mayors. And it just, I feel it might cost a lot more to put it on on a Sunday, but we'll see how we go. We'll give it a try.
Thank you, councillor McRae.
Just make a comment?
Yeah, certainly.
I just wanted to, yeah, send out a, sort of a commendation to the council staff for the Anzac Day ceremony. I concur with councillor McRae's comments. It was an excellent morning, both ceremonies. And also to the MIKO support staff as well, who did a job, good job on the day, I think. Yeah, it was a really, really good ceremony. I've had some good feedback from RSL members that have said that it was excellent and that's the way that should be, so just pass that on. Thanks.
Thank you, deputy mayor. And I concur, there was a lot of behind-the-scenes effort from council staff and MIKO staff, and they did a great job. And it was also great to see the public out in force, especially for the dawn service. I think that was almost bigger than the 10 o'clock service, so it was fantastic to see. So, yeah, I fully agree. Okay, so if there's no more comments on this one, all those in favour, and that's carried. And that takes us to item 10.3.
I'd like to move that council supports the 2021 Overlanders Way Festival of Sport and provides sponsorship in the amount of $5,000 to the North Queensland Sports Foundation to facilitate the Mount Isa segment of the event.
Thank you, councillor McRae. Can I get a second for this motion?
Streton.
Thank you, councillor Streton. Councillor McRae, have you got any, for, for comments?
Yeah, I think North Queensland Sports Foundation is making an effort to work with our grassroots sporting groups to get people back engaged in sport after having the time off with COVID, just to try and attract people out of their houses. The money is going towards attracting, working with the state bodies for each of the sports involved to get accredited people maybe to do some training or certificates and have come and try days. The North Queensland Sports Foundation has also supported us a lot financially with the Mewet NQ programme, so I know that, I'm happy that, you know, we're giving the money over, but we are getting a lot back.
Thank you, councillor McRae. Does anyone have any comments for or against this motion? All those in favour, and that's carried.
I'm against. Please can I have it noted?
Yep. Thank you, and that takes us to item 10.4.
Me also, yeah.
Yep, sorry, yes, councillor McRae.
I'd like to move that council supports a sponsorship request from Mount Isa Apex in the amount of $6,245, $5,000 cash plus $1,245 in kind in support of 2021 Rock Pop Mine Show subject to the conditions listed, one through to six.
Thank you, councillor McRae.
No, yes.
Yeah.
One through to six.
Thank you, councillor McRae. Can I get a second for that motion?
Second, Bowick.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Any comments for that motion, councillor McRae?
Um, Rock Pop has traditionally been a long-time event in our community. It's very well supported from the schools and the families, so I'd really love to see them have a big event.
Yep, thank you, councillor McRae. Any, any comments for or against this motion? Okay, all those in favour, and that's carried. And this takes us to the late item, five point, ah, sorry, 10.5, and would anyone like to put this motion forward? I'll read out the officer's recommendation, and this is the 2021-2022 Draft Budget. And the officer's recommendation is that council receives and accepts the financial year for 2021-2022 Draft Budget, capital works plan and fees and charges and approves the release for public consultation. Can I get a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you, councillor Tully. Anyone for or against this motion? And that's carried. That takes us to item 11, which is the Environmental Management with councillor Paul Streton.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. 11.1, Water and Sewer Monthly Report, offers some recommendation there. Council receives and accepts the March 2021 Water and Sewer Monthly Report.
Thank you, councillor Streton. Can I get a second for this motion? Thank you, councillor McRae. Councillor Streton, do you have any comments for this motion?
Yeah, just a bit of executive summary there. The department has continued its commitment to capital work projects with resources allocated daily. Water main replacement continues in Soldiers Hill and saw the water main at stage two of Gleypli Park replaced. Owen Stanley Street, Thorpe Street and a section of Charles Street works in Bukah Street and Thorpe Street have commenced, and the new water main will be relocated outside of properties' backyards. Renewal of road crossings, water surfaces has been undertaken on Old Micah Creek Road, Salford Street and Booner Street. The valve replacement programme resumed and valves on Trainor Street and Pamela Street in Town View and Kennedy Street and Hilton Road in Soldiers Hill were replaced. Aging trunk water main valves on Duchess Road have been exposed and prepared for replacement next month. The water and sewer team were requested to conduct urgent water infrastructure works at the Civic Centre following a burst ring main at the facility.
Thank you so much, councillor Streton. Anyone else with any more comments?
Yeah, just through the Chair, just on the Camberwell operations, just if I could ask, the CEO has the, the problem with the water to the public toilets. Do you know if that has been rectified?
Sorry, through Madam Mayor, which public toilets?
Oh, the toilets at Camberwell that had no water going to them.
Through you, Madam Mayor. The Director is nodding her head, so I'm guessing they have been rectified.
Okay, sorry.
Hey, Renee?
Um, thank you, councillor Coghlan. Um, yes, it happened on the day, so they were aware of the issue of on the day and one of our councillors.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Renee. If there's no other questions or comments, all those in favour, and that's carried.
11.2, Waste Management Monthly Report, offers a recommendation. Council receives and accepts the March 2021 Waste Management Monthly Report.
Thank you, councillor Streton. Can I have a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you, councillor Tully. Any comments, councillor Streton?
Yeah, waste management operations were mostly executed to schedule in March. However, one side loader is out of service for repairs and the chassis for, and expected two weeks. A truck had to be hired towards the end of March to ensure runs were completed with minimum delays due to the Easter weekend approaching. The team leader of waste management finished with council on 18th of March with an interim team leader being appointed to start on the 22nd of March.
Thank you, councillor Streton. Any other comments or for or against on this? All those in favour, and that's carried.
11.3, Environmental Services Monthly Report. Council receives and accepts the March 2021 Environmental Services Monthly Report.
Thank you, councillor Streton. A second for that motion?
Seconded, Fortune.
Thank you, councillor Fortune. Any comments for this motion, councillor Streton?
Yeah, Environmental Services Department delivered the following services in March. Responded to four service requests in relation to public health concerns. Responded to 13 asbestos complaints. Investigated nine incidents relating to littering and illegal dumping. The vector control officer inspected 78 sites across the Mount Isa Shire, treating 28 active breeding sites for mosquitoes. Undertook monthly groundwater monitoring at council's landfill site. Eight environmental cases were investigated and closed by the environmental officers. Sprayed various invasive plant species over 10 separate and expansive sites across the Mount Isa Shire.
Thank you, councillor Streton. Is there anyone else with any comments for or against this motion? All those in favour, and that's carried.
Okay. 11.4, Local Laws Monthly Report. Offers a recommendation. Council receives and accepts the March 2021 Local Laws Monthly Report.
Thank you, councillor Streton. Can I get a second for that motion? Thank you, councillor McRae. Councillor Streton, any comments on this one?
Local laws, rehomed 22 animals in the month, 16 dogs, six cats, implanted 27 microchips in cats and dogs, investigated five alleged dog attacks, attended four after-hour scenes, engaged in two community projects. And I've just got a bit of a good story to go with that. Great outcome for two animal owners whose animals had found their way separately to the animals management facility after being missing for two years. Both owners had microchipped their animals when purchased. When the animals, a dog and a cat arrived at the facility, they were scanned for microchipping. The animal management officer contacted the owners and discovered the animals had been missing for two years. A rewarding outcome for the staff and the owners.
That is, that is a great story. I haven't heard a story like that. That's fantastic.
A dog and a cat.
A dog and a cat, hey, so.
So there you go.
That's a movie in the making, that story.
The cat came back.
Yep.
That's, that's all I've got, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, councillor Streton. If there's no other comments, all those.
Through the Chair, Madam Mayor, I just noticed a little note. I think it looked at a place in the Environmental Services Report about some issues with vehicles. I don't know if that's a bit of a wrangle going on, but it talked about vehicles at the AMF not being available for officers or something. So just wondering if that's been resolved or if there's some work being done on that.
Through you, Madam Mayor. There's a complete review of fleet going on at the moment, and that will keep continuing, and it's about allocating the appropriate vehicles, the appropriate services.
Yeah, okay, thanks, yeah.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Okay, all those in favour, and that's carried. And this actually takes us through to item 12, which is Corporate and Financial Services, Economic Development, Promotions and Development, and that's deputy mayor councillor Phil Bowick.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. So I'll move that councillor, council receives and accepts the March 2021 Customer Services Monthly Report.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Can I get a second for that motion?
McRae.
Thank you, councillor McRae. Deputy mayor, will you have any comments for this motion?
Yeah, thanks. Just, the report shows there was 2,330 telephone calls during March, so it's been quite busy out there. Average is around 112 calls a day, plus the walk-up trade, of course. So there were 641 cases which were taken up into the database for case management, and there's 504 of those have been closed. So there's a steady, like a steady resolution of most cases, and I believe there's still 136 outstanding from, open from March, which further action is still required. But, yeah, all in all, quite a busy little outfit. Thanks very much.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Any other comments on this one? All right, all those in favour, and that's carried. This takes us to 12.2.
So this is a Corporate Financial Services Monthly Report. I'll move that council receives and accepts the March 2021 Corporate and Financial Services Monthly Report.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Can I get a second for that motion?
Streton.
Thank you, councillor Streton. Any comments for this motion, deputy mayor?
Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor. So, yeah, it's a pretty strong month for council. Trying to get to my notes here. We've had a, everything's moved into a favourable position for council, so at the present time, we're got an overall operating result of 8.7 million in surplus, so that, that comes on the back of the issuing of the council rates during March, which is the bulk of our revenue for rates income now for the year, and takes us up pretty close to our, to our budgeted revenue. So at this stage, we're at 86% of the operating revenue, and there's three quarters of the year gone, so we're in quite a good position now. The operating expenses, they're also favourable to budget, so we're not going over budget in overall, so that's going very, very well. And we haven't received much in the way of capital works for flood damage because of the, of, clearly we didn't have any flooding events during the, during the wet season, so that's, that's probably gone back down against budget for the year. So at the moment, we're looking pretty good for a surplus towards the end of the year, just a small surplus, which was, you know, against the original budget of a deficit of 2.6 million. I think it's really put council in a, in a good position now. Yeah, I'll just go on. There's a report there shows that the outstanding rates now, which includes the recent rates notices of 24 million, which is outstanding. And there's a couple of other notes here. The water consumption notices that were issued in February were due for payment in full by the end of March. So that's, that's all happening at the moment. There is non-residential properties, rates being issued, so they're issued, no, sorry, they'll be issued on 31st of May. Yep, just another note there that we're moving towards electronic rates notices for residents and rate buyers, so they can, you know, elect to pay their, their notes by, their rates by digital means rather than to receive the paper copy if they want. uh, digital means rather than to, um, to receive the paper copy if they want. And the state, um, fire levy, um, the payment for that, um, is, has been made now to Queensland Fire and Emergency Services for, um, a one point nine million, which is, is, uh, money that we collect on the rates, um, at each opportunity. Uh, we also, um, just our cash position is, um, very, very good. We've, um, we're holding, um, fifty two million at, um, at the moment in cash and also the, um, the unrestricted cash is sitting at twenty four million. So we're, um, we're quite healthy there. Um, the, just to take that a bit further, we've, uh, got the quarterly update on the loans. Um, and I did calculate that, I think, um, present time we owe twenty, twen-, uh, sorry, twenty one million, I think it is, yeah, is the total. Um, so that's, uh, yeah, it's quite a, a, a small amount of debt in, you know, considering the size of council we are and, um, across Queensland, if you compare that. So that's, um, well in hand. We continue to pay that debt down and not having borrowed it all, um, this term. Um, yeah, there's a, uh, profit and loss sheet there and showing the, and also the, um, the balance sheet as well. So, um, I'll just hand back to mayor for questions if there's anything.
Thank you. Is there any other comments on this one? And I fully concur with the deputy mayor, uh, the staff at Mount Isa City Council have been working hard. Um, not just, uh, on the, uh, as normal, but we've had the budget as well. And, uh, I know there's been some long hours pulled in the last, you know, couple of months. So a big thank you to the staff. And we are in a good position and a big nod to the, that hard work that's been put in.
Uh, mayor, could I just comment to the, um, the draft budget we've approved today? That's going out to public consultation now. So, um, um, I'll just make a note of that. But also there's a mid-budget, uh, an interim budget review due before the end of the financial year for our, for our current year budget as well.
Yeah, and that's a good pickup because, um, we, we definitely are going out to consultation with that budget. So I'm looking forward to actually, um, what the community has to say.
So through Madam Mayor, the budget consultation will take place towards the end of next week and, uh, hopefully the following week as well. Um, but there are a few conflicting, um, things within, within everyone's calendars at the moment. So we'll try and line those dates up so the public can have a look at the Capital Works Programme, the budget itself and the fees and charges as well.
Thank you David. All right, if there's no more comments, all those in favour, and that's carried. And that takes us to item twelve point three.
Um, yeah, um, so, uh, I'll move that council receives and accepts the March two thousand and twenty one promotions and development monthly report.
Thank you deputy mayor.
Seconded Fortune.
Uh, seconded by councillor Fortune, thank you. Any, uh, comments for this deputy mayor?
Thanks Madam Mayor. So, um, yeah, the team have been, um, quite busy again, um, mainly, um, servicing the, uh, the media and the social media. Um, with, um, trying to get our messages and, um, communications out to the public. Um, we also, we've had a range of community consultations, but they're all, I believe, closed now. The last one being the, um, the skate bowl replacement, um, at the skate park, which closed on the twenty seventh of April, which was yesterday. Um, so, uh, there's those opportunities for the public to, um, to, uh, in- inject their, um, comments and things into those, um, into those, um, items. Um, the usual range of, um, of, um, uh, publications and media feeds. So that's, um, quite a healthy amount of work being done there. Um, thank you very much.
Thank you deputy mayor.
Through the chair, um, can I just ask about the, it's still open. It says here about the not-for-profit organisations free first aid training courses. What's that about?
First aid.
Yeah, not about first aid.
Yeah, is that still open? I think, um, still open.
Have we been going out to, like, have we been sending, we should have all the contacts for all the sporting bodies, community groups? Do we actually send them an email letting them know or we have?
So through Madam Mayor, I'm under the impression, but I'm happy to be corrected, that's all been done. And even through that, there's been a very low pickup on the first aid training.
Could I just check that that has been done on an email, not on Facebook? On emails to the organisations? Everyone's got a, an email that secretaries and, and the people in their work. And I just would like to, I would like that information sent to them via email.
Yeah, we can send that out again.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm pretty sure it's gone out by email, but I can go back and check again because we changed the criteria to try and even pick up more people to participate.
Yeah, so they, um, they've actually included, um, businesses under twenty staff as well and now eligible to apply for this as well, which is a great initiative by council. So, yeah, that would be great. And, and I think it's important that if you are a non-for-profit, um, and you have recently gone through an AGM and changed your, you know, all the people in your committee just to liaise with council so we can make sure we've got all the up-to-date details and we can sort of communicate any things that council are doing for non-for-profits. Any other comments on this one? All right, all those in favour, and that's carried. All right, so that takes us to item thirteen and that's executive services. We have a conflict of interest with this one. Thank you. And so the officer's recommendation is that council, the motion is that council receives and accepts the March twenty twenty um, correspondence report. Can I get someone move that motion?
I'll move that motion.
Thank you councillor Fortune. And can I get someone to second that motion?
Second.
Thank you councillor Tully. Councillor Fortune, any comments on this?
No comment, thank you.
No comments? Any comments for against this motion? All right, all those in favour, and that's carried. If we can bring the deputy man back in. And that takes us to item thirteen point two, which is the council decision report, March twenty twenty. The officer's recommendation and the motion is that council receives and accepts the March twenty twenty one council decision report. Can I get someone move that motion please?
I'll move Barwick.
Thank you deputy mayor. Can I get someone to second that motion please?
McCrae.
Thank you councillor McCrae. Anyone like to put any comments for against this motion?
Uh, look, Madam Mayor, it's just, uh, yeah, uh, sort of a spreadsheet on, um, the council decisions going back for some time and, um, whether they're completed or their status. Um, I, I had one question, I think, just on one item, which was the, um, uh, the tra-, uh, Transport and Logistics Centre. Um, was there, is there likely to be any movement on that, um, particular project?
Oops, through you Madam Mayor, I'm not sure if I can turn that off. Through you Madam Mayor. Um, I believe the Transport and Logistics Centre was listed as part of the submission that went into Infrastructure Australia, um, that I circulated to council, um, about a week, a week and a half ago. Uh, so that's gone in there. There have been no direct, uh, negotiations, um, with, uh, Mount Isa Mines in relation to the Transport and Logistics Centre at this point. Um, I also think there may be a, there may have been another letter sent in regard to that in relation to a minister to see how we progress that one as well. Uh, but I'd need to double check on that.
Yeah, uh, it's a, I think it's a key project for the future of Mount Isa and, um, yeah, I'd like, I, I think we should all, uh, sort of look to, um, you know, press it along a bit more. Thanks very much.
Thank you deputy mayor. If there's no other comments, all those in favour, and that's carried. And that takes us to item thirteen point three, which is the public CCTV upgrade. And the officer's recommendation and the motion is that council receive and note the public CCTV upgrade. Would someone like to move that motion please?
I'll move it.
Thank you councillor Coghlan. Would someone like to second that motion?
Streton.
Thank you councillor Streton. Streton, would anyone like to speak on behalf or against this motion?
No, I just think with what's happening in the city, it's, it's a, a good thing, um, the new cameras and, um, the different locations. So quicker it gets in the better for the community.
Thank you councillor Coghlan. All those.
Through you Madam Mayor. Excuse me councillor Coghlan.
Yes.
Just for the benefit of those people, uh, listening online, could you read out the locations?
Yes, I shall. The four new locations are Martin and Walton Street intersection, the Camerewell and Dora Street intersection, Clark and East Street intersection and Ablespeth Parade North. Uh, additional cameras have been added at, um, the following locations for better visibility. Simpson Street near Buffs Club and Mount Isa Village, West Street, Western Isa Street intersection and Isa and Camerewell Street intersection outside of the post office. So four new cameras have been added at each of these locations that can provide the three sixty degree view. Um, so they're not the PTZs, they're three sixty.
That's fantastic. Thank you so much councillor Coghlan. If there's no other comments, all those in favour, and that's carried. And that takes us to item thirteen point four, which is entertainment and hospitality policy. And the officer's recommendation is that, and the motion is that council adopt the enterprise and hospitality policy version five as presented. Can I get someone to move that motion?
I'll move Barwick.
Thank you deputy mayor. Can I get someone to second that motion?
Second.
Thank you councillor Tully. Um, would you like to talk on this motion deputy mayor?
Uh, look, I, I just think it's, um, important to have that policy, um, in place for councillors. Councillors then know what they're doing and also, um, the administration know what's, um, possible for councillors to, to claim, um, within compliance, um, of the act. Um, so yeah, very important policy. Thanks very much.
Thank you. If there's no other comments, all those in favour, and that's carried. Then we've got item thirteen point five, which is the councillor investigation policy. And the motion, uh, from the officer's recommendation is that, uh, council adopt the councillor investigation policy version two uh, as presented. Can someone move that motion please?
McCrae.
Thank you councillor McCrae. Can someone second that motion please? Thank you councillor Tully. Um, would anyone like to speak before, on behalf or against this motion?
Sorry, yes, through the chair, I'd like to, um, say something. I, I don't know whether it's appropriate at this time, but I, I would like to see anything that gets referred to, to, uh, the council, to, to the triple C. There should be a fee paid. And if that fee isn't paid, um, if the allegations are found to be false or misleading, um, they lose the money. And if it is, um, now on the other hand, if it is a thing, they get their money back. Because at the moment, there just seems to be allegations thrown left, right and centre to all councillors. Not only in Mount Isa, but, you know, across all, um, local government and or I think it should be, you know, a similar fee to the right, right of information. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Tully.
Through you Madam Mayor, I've asked the coordinator of governance to start preparing a report for the next council meeting. And that report, uh, will be there for the consideration of councillors. It will suggest a, a payment of some sort of amount of funds to, um, to proceed with a complaint regardless of which, um, whether it be the Office of the Independent Assessors, the triple C or the, um, Information Commissioner, um, that'd be applied through those. Um, I will also ensure that it's, uh, written up as a motion for the LGAQ conference as well. If council, that will be one of the recommendations within the report.
Could we, um, include something to do with anonymous complaints in that as well?
Through you Madam Mayor, yes.
Just through the chair, thank you David for all that information. And I do agree with everything councillor Tully has said. I think Mount Isa needs to lead the way in this and really vigorously, um, keep pushing it because it's just ridiculous, the money and the time and effort that just, that people can just put in complaints about nothing. They get found to be dismissed and then nothing happens to them. But they've taken up time. And what rate payers have to understand is it's costing them. These silly complaints are costing them. And I, I do know that there are definite complaints out there, but I just would like to say as a council, we, we really need to go forward with this.
Any other comments on this one? All right, all those in favour, and that's carried. And then that leads us to item thirteen point six, which is the endorsement of the post implementation review of the Strong and Sustainable Resource Communities Act twenty seventeen submission. And the officer's recommendation is that, um, the motion is that council officially endorse and post implementation review of, sorry, the post implementation review of the Strong and Sustainable Resources Community Act twenty seventeen submission. Does any, anyone want to put forward that motion?
I'll move. Thanks Madam Mayor.
Thank you deputy mayor. Does, uh, anyone like to second this motion?
I'll second that Madam Mayor.
Thank, thank you councillor Fortune. Any comments on this one?
Uh, thanks Madam Mayor. This is, uh, a follow-up to the, um, the, uh, prohibition of, um, a hundred percent FIFO arrangements with mining companies, um, within proximity to, um, to cities and regional pounds. Um, I, I contributed, um, a fair bit to the submission, um, and I was pretty scathing, I've got to say. I think, um, it really hasn't achieved anything for Mount Isa City. I've tried to express that through the submission. Um, it's, uh, we, we've got more out of COVID really with, um, mining companies, um, asking their staff to, and service industries asking their staff to stay and live in the town rather than to, um, to be on a FIFO model. Um, so I've asked, uh, the, uh, the, um, department to, um, or the agency that's doing this to, um, uh, consider really having a look at that and, and to turn FIFO completely on its head uh, and make that the exception rather than the rule for all mining companies. Uh, it's a big ask, but I think at these, these, um, review times, it's important for us to do that. And for, for us to, um, you know, to make our, our thoughts and comments heard. Because, um, you know, there was an expression many, many years ago, which called it the cancer of the bush. And I still believe it certainly is, you know. Um, and I think without the state government and even the federal government, you know, looking seriously at decentralisation policies, we're going to be stuck with this population drain from regional centres for a long, long time yet. So, um, so I've tried to express that through the submission. So, um, I hope, um, other councillors are, um, okay with that. Thank you.
Thank you deputy mayor. Um, and I also think the, um, um, the more information I would like on this is how the bill is policed. Because, uh, if, if, if they only wait till a complaint comes in, that's not good enough, you know. And if, um, what, what, what gets looked at i- is, um, what I'd like to know about and how, how they, um, police this bill, so. Is there, is there any more comments before we put this forward? All right, all those in favour, and that's confirmed. Carried. All right, so that takes us now to item fourteen, which is general business. And we, we do not have any general business. So, um, council now will adjourn briefly to commence enclosed business.
Could we quick five break?
Yep, so, um, I'll just read out the, uh, closed business resi- oh, we're just adjourning. Okay, thank you. I was jumping the gun there.
Hello Mike. I'm in, yeah, just in a council meeting. See you Derek.
Thank you.
No, I don't know. Yeah, mate, you, you, yeah, put them together mate for a sec. Okay, thanks very much. See you mate. Bye.
Yeah, that's really good.
Thank you, it's three fifty-nine and I now declare the meeting in open business. Can I get someone to move open into open business? Thank you councillor Tully, can I get someone to second that?
Seconded.
Thank you councillor Strutton, all those in favour? And that's carried. Thank you, it is three fifty-nine and we are now back into open business. That takes us to item fifteen. Item fifteen point one, the community grants and sponsorship round two twenty twenty twenty-one. Would someone like to move that report?
I'll move, madam mayor. I'll move the council award the community grants and sponsorship round two February twenty twenty-one funding to the following organisations. Mentalist Pistol Club repaint range three for four thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Paws Hooves and Claws Inc, PHC operations, DSECs for five thousand dollars. The Isa Ski Boat and Power Club Inc, purchase club area maintenance equipment for two thousand dollars. Happy Valley Community Kindergarten, purchase of new outdoor maintenance equipment for one thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars. And Isa Highlanders Dance Association Inc for upgrading of the security at dance hall for four thousand two hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Total of that being seventeen thousand seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars. The sponsorship, Mount Isa Motorsports and Recreation Inc for Mount Isa Motor Show and Swap Meet for one thousand dollars. Mount Isa Camp Draft Association Incorporated for Mount Isa Camp Draft two thousand and twenty-one for nine thousand one hundred and fifty-two dollars. The Drovers Camp Association Incorporated for Drovers Camp Festival for eight thousand dollars. The total of the sponsorship being eighteen thousand one hundred and fifty-two dollars. And all amounts are exclusive of GST.
Thank you deputy mayor, can I get a second for this motion?
Seconded.
Thank you councillor Strutton, all those in fa- oh. No, all those in favour, sorry. And that's carried. That takes us to item fifteen point two and that's the dormant energy substation building. Would anyone like to put that motion forward?
I will, madam mayor. That council approved the acquisition of the former Ergon Substation Building described as lot seven on M seven five eight one four three. And the council authorised the CEA to negotiate and finalise the details of the acquisition.
Thank you deputy mayor, can I get a second for that?
Seconded, fortune.
Thank you councillor Fortune, all those in favour? And that's carried.
I'm against, please can I have it noted?
Thank you, and that takes us now to next item which is fifteen point three, water options. Would someone like to put this recommendation, officer's recommendation forward?
Through the chair, late item, sorry, the confidential fifteen point three. The office recommendation is that council receive and note the Mount Isa Water Service Structure Options Issues Paper.
Thank you councillor Tully for moving that motion, would someone like to second that motion?
Seconded.
Thank you councillor Coglan, all those in favour? And that's carried. Which leads us for the last item of the day, fifteen point four. Would anyone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Yeah, I'll move.
Thank you councillor Strutton.
Officer's recommendations there are council awards, the inspection and relining of the Mount Isa City Council sewer trunk mains as detailed in the RFQ. RFQ slash twenty twenty-one dash one seven, scope to interflow, PTY and LTD for the sum of eight eight zero. Eight, zero, 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 GST inclusive.
Thank you councillor Strutton, can someone second that motion?
Second.
Thank you councillor Tully, all those in favour? And that's carried.
Well, I think that ended up at eighty-eight million.
Would I be just through the chair, I'd just like to say thank you to the council workers that gave us the presentation on that. Because it was really well done and presented in a way that those that aren't in that industry can understand. So thank you to everyone who did that.
Thank you councillor Coglan.
That's said councillor Coglan.
All right, well, with that, that concludes our meeting today. So the time is four oh four PM and I now declare the ordinary meeting closed. Thank you everybody.
Thank you.